Okay, then we will call the December 21st, 2020 School Board Meeting for Lacey Township to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand for the Flag Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 16th, 2020, and as amended on December 17th, 2020, and by posting the notice in the Forkwood River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Mr. DeGeorge, roll call for attendance, please.
Yes ma'am. Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Here.
Mr. Polino. Mrs. DeCensa.
Present.
Mr. Riggs.
Present.
Mrs. Downing.
Present. Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a resolution to adopt NJAC 5:39-1 as in our board agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Who was second?
Donna.
Donna.
Roll call, Mr. DeGeorge.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino. Mrs. DeCensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comments. This is for agenda items only. Mr. Merman?
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. At this time, we will accept public comment on agenda items only. Any other comments must wait until the next public comment portion of this meeting. The time limit for public comment is five minutes per speaker. You will be allowed to speak a second time when everyone else has finished their comments if you choose to do so. Anyone who would like to comment at this time is instructed to virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app or dial *9 if you're calling in via telephone. You will be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn on agenda items only. Mrs. Downing seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Merman.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. In wake of the resolution that was just adopted, I did receive three Google Form-related type questions. One of them, in my opinion, pertains to the agenda portion of the meeting. It is from Mr. Anthony Rizzoli, but I only see the word says "question on policies." It doesn't say a specific question on policies, so I'm not confident that I can properly address this question that I received via Google Form. I don't know if Mr. Rizzoli is available to elaborate on this comment, but I don't see any way that I can make any sense out of it. I know this is the first time, so there's no specific question.
Okay, and I'm sure he'll attend the regular session. We can ask him then.
Sure.
Thank you. And the other two are not agenda items?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to board member and superintendent comments. Let me just go... Mrs. DeCensa, for agenda items, do you have any questions or comments?
The only question I have really is I wanted some details about the special ed parent meeting that was held. And I would like to ask that no more contracts of any sort be put on the agenda without documentation because we did vote on a contract that we didn't see last month, and I had a question about the dates, and I want to know if it was ever revised.
Dr. Clark or Mrs. McAvoy, would either one of you like to comment on the meeting that you?
I was going to discuss that during curriculum, if that would be okay?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as it's coming up.
And Mrs. DeCensa, you asked about on page 13, the health and safety evaluation statement of assurance with the date as 9/11. Mr. DeGeorge, could you explain that to Mrs. DeCensa, what you said to me?
Certainly. Mrs. DeCensa, the annual statement of assurance is something required by the Department of Education, which is our attestation that we did, in fact, submit the safety evaluations for each of our school buildings for whatever reason. I told Mrs. Downing this before. I can't explain why the assurance is due by December 30th, but the actual checklist themselves, which we send every September, were submitted on September 11th.
Oh, okay. So that explains the date differential. Okay, thank you.
Your state deadlines again. Okay, anything else, Regina?
Um, not at this time.
Okay, Mrs. McAvoy?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
Not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Not at this time, thank you.
I don't see Mr. Polino is here yet. Okay. Mr. Riggs?
Quite all right, thank you, though.
Okay, Dr. Clark?
Not at this time, thank you.
And Mr. DeGeorge?
Thank you, but I do not have anything. Thank you.
Okay. So since we have no comments, we can move right into private session because we do have quite a lot, I believe. So, Mr. DeGeorge, could I have a motion to go into private session, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Peters?
All right, so the motion reads as follows. Be resolved that a private session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current load of cases, and confidential personnel matters specifically collecting. The subject matters of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Length of this evening's private session is estimated to be 50 minutes, 5-0, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business action to be taken. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will move into another platform for our private session.
Okay.
Okay, could I have a motion to close private session, please?
Ken?
Make that motion.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 21st, 2020 Lacey School Board Meeting. Once again, I'd like to welcome our senior or student representatives. I see Caroline and I believe Caitlin is on there, so who would like to go first?
I'm gonna just speak about some senior information we have for student government. So in senior news, we're selling holiday clothes for $10, and to purchase you can email or see our representative, Mr. Paula, for any information. And then as far as as an association, we have sponsored a pajama day for the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, also known as CHOP, on November 23rd, and collectively we raised $365 in students and staff. So we donated that for the holiday season, so.
That's excellent. Congratulations. Nice job. Was that Caroline talking?
I'm going to now.
Okay. Go ahead, Caroline. I don't see.
The recipient for the Matthew Blum Unsung Hero Award for the Month of December is Matthew Kahn. Matthew always has a positive attitude inside and outside of school, and is always kind and respectful to others.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brandis.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Matthew is a hard worker and is willing to do anything for anybody. He brings a positive attitude to sports and in school. Inside a school, Matthew participates in many sports such as football, wrestling, and goes to weight room in the spring. Matthew is a very good wrestler and an outstanding football player. He wants to get involved in more clubs and activities. Outside of school, he trains to become an even better football player and wrestler. For these reasons, we picked Matthew Kahn as our Unsung Hero Award.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Clark.
Thank you, President Downing, and welcome everybody to the December Board Meeting. Thank you, Caitlin and Caroline, and congratulations to Matthew. I know, Mrs. Downing, you talk about it all the time. It's one of your favorite awards. It is an extraordinary award, and we congratulate Matthew and his family, if you're watching, on this accomplishment and this recognition. It's fantastic. I also want to thank Caroline and Caitlin, and I know we had one other student join us last week during our discussion forum. We had probably close to six people. This is a continuation of our reopening our schools' subcommittee discussion forum, and we just check in every two months. So our next meeting is scheduled for February, and we're gonna see if we can get some more high school students and then add some middle school students to join in our dialogue as well. So thank you to the three students who joined us. So, you know, it would seem fitting that we end 2020 with yet another virtual board meeting, but with all of the quarantining that is going on, we are using an abundance of caution, and so it will be appropriate thing to do. We do have a few presentations tonight, but before we get to those, of course, I want to thank our two artists for designing this month's board cover and superintendent's report. So a big thank you to Christian Chertola, grade four student at Lenoka Harbor School for designing the cover of tonight's board agenda, and to Leah Hernandez, also a fourth grader at Lenoka Harbor, for designing the cover of the superintendent's report. We always appreciate the artists that join the beautiful walls here at the board office, and so thank you for that. All right, so like I said, we have quite a few presentations tonight, quite a few videos to show, so let's get right to it and start with seniors of the month.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacey Township High School, and I'm excited to celebrate December's Seniors of the Month. First, I'd like to congratulate Sophia Leiter. At this time, we're gonna watch a short clip of her accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Sophia Leiter, and I am proud to be December Senior of the Month.
Sophia, I've had the pleasure of having you in class not just one year or two years, but three years, which is a pretty rare achievement, all the way back to our sophomore leadership class for history, sophomore year to US II honors last year, and now in probably one of the most rigorous AP classes at the high school AP US history. And I have to say, it has been a pleasure and an honor not just to have worked with you for the last three years, but to see you become a strong academic student who things didn't always come so easy for, but you never give up. You always push your academic limits. You always ask for help when needed, and you never back down from a challenge. So congratulations. It has been fun to watch, and it's great working with you.
My favorite class at Lacey would have to be Mr. Romeo's history class. I've always had a love for US history, and when I first had Mr. Romeo, my sophomore year for the Leadership Academy, I just knew I was gonna love his class just by the way he lectures and the way we did our class discussions, and just the way he teaches makes history so much, so much better. And just him as a teacher, he's always there for you. He wants what's best for you, and he's gonna make sure he can do everything he can to make your year successful, fun, happy, and also that you're learning. But he's just a great teacher, a great person, and I love his class.
Congratulations, Sophia Leiter, on being nominated as Senior of the Month for the Month of December. I am so very proud of you. This year in field hockey, you've really stepped up defensively. I put you on the hardest girls in the conference, and you've always done well and succeeded and stopped them. I can't thank you enough for what you did on the field for me and how you stepped up as a leader.
After my four years at Lacey Township High School, I've made a lot of memories, friendships, and bonds, ones that I'll never forget and hold close to me forever, especially for being a part of the field hockey team, choir, and drama club all four years of high school. Whether it was growing a friendship in choir and drama club and performing with Mr. O's support with a big smile on his face every single day, or the family that I've gained while on the field hockey team and playing the sport that I love, which I am continuing to play in college. But a school-wide memory of mine would have to be Battle of the Classes, which my grade has won now for two years in a row, and it's just a really fun time where all the grades come together, and it's like a competition where you play games, and you get to see people that you don't normally see in your school day, and the goal is to win, and whoever wins wins the most money towards their prom. And it's just a really fun time to come together and conclude the end of that half of the school year before winter break, and it's just a memory that I'll always have and cherish of my high school years.
She just recently contacted me again, even though I don't have her this year, to let me know that she was a candidate for the Congress of Future Medical Leaders, and they invited her to be a part of their conference. And she's so humble. She was like, "Are you sure this was for me?" And of course it was. She has an amazing GPA. She's just an all-around great student. She's a natural leader. She's also involved in the arts. She's a tremendous singer, so she's involved with the choir and drama and takes a leadership role in that as well. And if anybody deserves Senior of the Month, it is most certainly Sophia.
Next, I'd like to congratulate Colin Rolak as being December's Senior of the Month. At this time, I'll watch a video of his accomplishments as well.
Colin, congratulations on getting Senior of the Month for December 2020. I've had Colin for two years in the woodshop, and each of those two years have been fantastic. He's got great attitude when he comes in, gets to work, does stuff right away. And when I got the email that said he got Senior of the Month, I was not surprised at all. Absolutely happy. Couldn't have picked a better person for it. And wish you all the best in the future. Keep up the good work in all your school, all your studies, your wrestling, and everything that you pursue in the future. Congratulations again.
After high school, I will be attending a full-year college and hopefully wrestling.
All right, so I'm here congratulating Colin Rolak on earning Senior of the Month. Colin's gonna be a captain of this year's wrestling team. Some qualities in Colin are a work ethic. He's got incredible leadership skills, and he's got that kind of magnetic personality where, you know, kids attract to him. So whatever he's doing, a lot of kids want to emulate and, you know, be like Colin.
In school, I wrestle for Lacey, and out of school, I am in a wrestling club.
Like I said, I've had Colin for two years in the woodshop. This year has been obviously a little bit different. It started off with Colin and one other student in my first period class and transitioned to just Colin. So he and I have actually gotten to do a lot of talking, not only woodshop, but personal interests, and it's been quite a good time, you know, a little bit weird having just he and I. But we've made the best of it. I think it's been pretty enjoyable, and I'll be sad to see him go in February.
My favorite memory has to be junior year homecoming.
Just congratulating him on earning the Senior of the Month. It's well deserved, well earned. I'm looking forward to getting back in the lines then with him, getting my hands on him, starting to train him again, and continue to, you know, peak and push him towards those goals he sets for himself and the goals that he sets for our team.
Fantastic, and congratulations to Sophia and Colin. So sorry we couldn't have you at a live board meeting, but maybe we can invite all of those seniors who didn't get the opportunity to be part of a live meeting to get us to join in when things go back to normal, and things will go back to normal. So congratulations again. All right, so we have a special presentation for our staff members of the month. So this is our second time doing this, and we went in a little bit of a different direction, and I'm not gonna give it away because the video will do just that. So, Mr. Leidel, we are ready.
Hello, everyone. We're back here again to announce our December Staff Members of the Month. I am so excited to tell you that we went in a little bit of a different direction. Our committee this month decided unanimously to recognize all nine of our school nurses. Why? Because they have been working triple overtime to ensure the safety of our staff members and our students, and I can't thank them enough. So now, our principals have prepared some videos because they surprised our school nurses who did not know that they were being recognized as December's Staff Members of the Month.
Hi, Lacey Township. Ms. Shlony and I are here at the Forkwood River School, and we're gonna recognize Nurse Valardi, who is one of our December Employees of the Month here in the district. We are recognizing all of our nurses. Ms. Shlony, will you call Nurse Valardi out?
I will.
Mrs. Valardi, how are you? So congratulations. We are here to recognize you as one of the Lacey Township School District's Employees of the Month for December, and we're recognizing you for all of your hard work this year and every year, and your dedication to our kids, especially as we work through this pandemic.
Thank you.
So congratulations. Those are for you. Wave to the camera.
Wish I could give you guys a hug.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good. I just had to share a piece of information with you. It's actually very important if you have a second.
I do.
Okay. The nurses have been selected as the District Employee of the Month, so congratulations. You are our District Employee of the Month.
Thank you. I'm honored.
Hi, this is Mrs. Reneska, and I'm the principal at Cedar Creek Elementary School. We've had quite a hectic day today in the nurse's office, but we are about to go surprise Nurse Clancy as one of our Staff Members of the Month. Let's go. Nurse Clancy?
Yes.
Can we see you?
Oh, my goodness.
The district is honoring all the school nurses as our Staff Members of the Month for this year's, uh, this month's board meeting. So congratulations from six feet apart. Well, almost six feet apart.
This is like a... But thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. I'm like so embarrassed, and I'm not this type of person.
I know.
I love my child, and I love being at Cedar Creek.
Hi, Ms. Crouppa.
Hello.
I have some exciting news to share with you at our board meeting this month. We are recognizing all of our nurses as Staff Members of the Month, so thank you for all that you do.
Well, thank you for appreciating us.
Hi, Nurse DiGutano. I have some great news for you. You are being recognized as a Staff Member of the Month at our next board meeting. Thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to go in and see Mrs. Mayberry, who's covering for Mrs. Valardi today at Forkwood River School. Hello. Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
All right, so I'm sure you've heard already, or you may or may not, but we are recognizing all of our nurses as our Staff Members of the Month, and I'm here to congratulate you and say thank you for all you've done. Mrs. Mayberry is new to our staff this year. She's one of our floater nurses, and along with Mrs. Johnstone, they have been covering our needs wherever we need them throughout the district, have been absolutely incredible. At any given time, I could pick up the phone, my secretary could pick up the phone and call Ashley or Kathleen and say, "Hey, we need you at Fork River," or "I know we told you to go to Mill Pond, but now we need you at the high school." And they're bouncing back and forth and are an incredible help to us this year, and we really appreciate it, all the talent and knowledge that you've brought. So congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And you're definitely a welcome addition to our staff this year.
I'm glad it's helped.
Okay, you were at the middle school. We're gonna celebrate our nurses and all the great things they're doing. Let's go. All right, here we are with Dr. Patterson, the latest judge of middle school nurse. I am proud and happy to say all the nurses in the district are being nominated as Staff Members of the Month for all the hard work you've done, all the energy you've put forth, and everything you've done to keep our students and staff safe. So we appreciate you. We thank you. This is for you.
Thank you. That's very sweet. That's very sweet.
There you go. All right.
I thought you guys were playing a gag on me.
Not at all.
Aww.
Aww, it's well deserved.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, we're here to celebrate and congratulate you and Kathy for being Staff Members of the Month of December.
Yes, thank you.
Shannon, along with Kathy and the rest of our nurses in district, are the Staff Members of the Month, so congratulations. And thank you so much personally for being on the front lines and one of the first ones to take temperature readings all the way back until July 13th. So you've been such a big help to us in the district.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're so appreciated. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. Congratulations to all the nurses as well in district.
All right, thank you for playing that video.
Thanks again for joining us. Congratulations to our school nurses. You are our true heroes.
Oh, sorry, forgot there was the ending. Congratulations to all of our school nurses. We have plaques for you, so I will swing by to all of you tomorrow to deliver them. And it is true, you are our true heroes. They have been working nights, weekends, over breaks, days off, and we can't thank them enough for continuing to keep us all healthy and safe. So congrats again. All right, so I'm gonna transition now to our Navy Summer Reading Program. And so even though summer is a distant memory, especially because we've had some cold days, tonight we are recognizing 23 students across our four elementary schools in grades K through 6 who read 32-plus hours this past summer in our summer reading challenge. These students achieved the top level of a Navy PA and an entry into a drawing for a tablet in our summer reading challenge. So I'm gonna read you the 23 names, and then we have a short video to show you who won the Amazon Fire tablet, which is really exciting. So congratulations to Zoe Bruckman, Ian Bruckman, Jake Burns, Liam DeAngelis, Bradley Edgecombe, Wesley Edgecombe, Caitlin Galetta, Stephen Germond, Jake Jackson, Jeffrey McCurdy, Laura Lyne McCurdy, Molly McGurk, Shaylee Mozal, Dakota O'Connor, Wes Pierce, Kalen Porter, Alexander Riley, Kaylee Rose, Braylen Sablicik, Ryan Sablicik, Yessen Salia, Brody Slota, and Vaughn Slota. So if we could all do a round of applause right now, we would. So it'll be like a half silent round of applause. I see board members applauding. So really exciting, and of course, we wanted to do that earlier, but, you know, everything's been delayed. So with that said, we now have a short video to show you the four recipients of the Amazon Fire tablet. And so what happened here is that all of the students who read 32-plus hours got their name put into this drawing, and we picked four for that short presentation.
Mrs. Cavalega, how are you?
Hi, Mr. Feather.
Hi, Mrs. Cavalega.
Boys, how we doing today? Good, good. Well, we just wanted to stop in because we are here to announce something very special.
Special announcement.
So, Ms. Shlony, what's going on here?
Well, boys, as you know, the number one way to become a better reader is to read. It's just like anything else. You have to practice it. So this summer, as you know, we had summer reading, and those students that read 32 hours or more got entered in a special drawing to win a tablet, and the winner happens to be in this class.
That's exciting news.
Very exciting.
So the winner of this very... So the winner of this very cool Fire HDA is Jake Jackson. Jake, come on up.
Congratulations, Jake.
Good job, Jake.
Jake, congratulations. Job well done. We know you're a top reader. Smile at the camera and give a wave. Can you wave? Alright Jake, congratulations. Keep up that good reading. And as Ms. Chalini said, reading is the key to success.
We have a really big announcement to make. Do you remember doing the Summer Reading this summer? Where everybody read and kept track of all of the minutes that they read? Okay, so everyone that received the Navy PA meant that they read 32 hours or more over the entire summer. And then they went into a raffle drawing and we drew out a name and their winner is right here in this room. Are you ready to find out? Okay, here we go.
And the winner is Kaylee Rose. Kindle the fire. Congratulations, Kaylee.
Excuse me, Mrs. Murray. Do you have a quick second?
Morning, boys and girls. So our Summer Reading Program was once again a huge success. And everyone that read this summer for 32 hours or more was put in a drawing to win a tablet. And one of the students in your class read for 58 hours. And they are the winner of our tablet. Let's see. Liam DeAngelis. Congratulations.
Hello, Mill Pond. I'm Mrs. Nemick and I'm so excited to pick our Summer Reading winner. So let's see who has won. Alright, I have picked Dakota O'Connor. Congratulations. Hi, Dakota. Congratulations. You are our Summer Reading winner. You won the Kindle. Yeah. Congratulations. Turn around and wave.
That's awesome.
Congratulations. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was great. Congratulations to our amazing students who completed an amazing amount of reading. And again, I wish we could have had them at the board meeting with us, but they got some pretty cool tablets. I don't know if anybody's ever seen them, but they're impressive. And I hope that they'll be able to do even more reading over the winter break. Alright, transitioning again. So every October, I present the report on student achievement. However, two factors prevented me from doing that this past October. First, as you know, we had a late start to the school year and so we needed a little bit more time to administer some of our in-district assessments. And second, the data that much of the achievement report is based on is from the 2018-19 school year. Because our students did not participate in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, also known as the NJSLA. And this was due to, yes, the pandemic. While that being said, there is some current data as it relates to the NWEA Measures of Academic Progress, or as we call it, the MAP test. We also have some SAT data, some PSAT data, and information on how our students did on the AP exams. Unsure of whether this board meeting would be in-person or virtual, we created yet another video that is about 27 minutes long. So instead of playing it here tonight, because 27 minutes is a really long time and there's some graphics involved. And I really want the school community to take a look and watch and re-watch segments of it. That video is posted on our website under curriculum. And once you navigate to curriculum, it's under the assessment tab on the left-hand side menu. So again, I encourage you to watch the video and then of course, email us with any questions you may have. And that's a good segue into the next thing I wanted to talk about, and that is the CUSAC District Performance Review. So one of the items on tonight's agenda is to approve the submission of our District Performance Review, which we also call the DPR. The purpose of the DPR is to prepare for New Jersey CUSAC, which stands, and we're all about alphabet soup here. But it stands for the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. So CUSAC is the Department of Education's monitoring and district self-evaluation system for all public school districts, not just Lacey. We are scheduled for this review to take place on February 10th and of course, it's going to be virtually. We are CUSAC'd every three years. And so one of the requirements for the CUSAC process is to form a CUSAC committee. And Board President Downing is a part of that committee. So what happens is we score ourselves on five indicators. And those five are instruction and program, finance, governance, operations, and personnel. And during our review, the Department of Education in turn scores us. So we provide a score on our District Performance Review. And then the county takes our information and then scores us. And what we are trying to achieve is earning the title Highly Performing District, which we have done every time we have been CUSAC'd. Which I believe the first year was 2008. So I'm going to ask that you stay tuned for the results, which I believe we can expect by the end of the school year. So more information will be forthcoming on that. Okay, at this time, we have a presentation by Mr. Joseph Bond, who is our Director of Special Services. And he is here with us tonight. And he is going to do a special services overview and update. And I think he's got a short video to share with us at the end as well. So thank you, Mr. Bond, for being here. And the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Clark. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, before I get started, I just want to reiterate congratulating our nurses for being recognized as Staff Members of the Month. I've worked very closely with them over the last however many months and they have far exceeded anyone's expectations and have risen to the occasion and the challenge. So congratulations to them. Well, well deserved. So what I'm going to do this evening is take you through an overview of special services programs and services that we offer currently. As well as an update on some of the initiatives and changes that we have going on in the world of special services. So next slide, Mr. Lidle. Okay, so I'll give you just a brief overview of the programs that we do offer. I'm actually going to start out with preschool, which isn't on this slide, to show you an update on what we have going on there. We currently run two types of preschool programs. We run a two-and-a-half hour preschool disabilities program. And then we run a five-hour communication and learning support program for students that require a little higher level of support. What that looks like in the COVID world is our five-hour program is coming in five days a week. And they are running five days a week on four hours a day. So it's slightly shorter than normal. And our preschool disabilities program, which is typically two-and-a-half hours every day. They're running on the AB hybrid schedule that the rest of the schools are running on. But we've extended their program to four hours a day as opposed to two-and-a-half hours. So it's four hours every other day versus two-and-a-half hours every day. So we're trying to match the minutes to the best extent possible for our youngest learners. We do offer in Lacey Township, a continuum of special education placements from the most restrictive environment up to the least restrictive environment. As we all know by law, we place our students in the least restrictive environment based off of their specific disabilities and situation. So the three self-contained programs we do offer, we have a program for multiple disabilities, a program for behavioral disabilities, and we also have an autism program. Our multiple disabilities program is housed at Lenoka Harbor School. And our behavioral disabilities is housed at Fork River School. And our autism program is housed at Cedar Creek School. And then Mill Pond, the middle school, and the high school have all three programs. This year, we, it wasn't always, didn't always look that way. There was always a classroom, there was a classroom at Fork River, Lenoka Harbor School for Behavioral Disabilities and then at the high school. And it kind of bounced back and forth between Mill Pond and the middle school based on the ages of students. We felt strongly about creating a K-12 comprehensive program here. So we did add a classroom at Mill Pond School and added a designated teacher at Lacey Township Middle School. So now we do have a classroom at every level throughout the district. And we are having discussions, vertical articulation, starting in preschool, all the way up through our high school teachers when these students do turn 21. We have a LLD program that runs in all of our schools as well. This is another area where we've added a staff member this year. Previously, if a student attended Fork River School in the LLD program after grade two, they would have to move to either Cedar Creek or Lenoka Harbor School. So we didn't have a three-four classroom there. Again, in an effort to keep the kids in their home school and make a comprehensive program, we felt strongly about adding that three-four section at Fork River School. And we were able to do that. So now anyone in the LLD program attends elementary school in their home school, K through four, and then transitions to Mill Pond School. As always, with all of our self-contained programs, we promote and encourage spending time with students without disabilities to the greatest extent possible. Our case managers and teachers and administrators do a phenomenal job having these students push into their gen ed peers. Whether it's during specials or lunch or academics, it's all individualized. Unfortunately, due to COVID, that's been reduced a little bit this year, but we do try to maximize their time with their non-disabled peers. Next slide, Mr. Lidle. We also offer a slate of related services, which include occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling, and speech. Currently, our services are being provided in-person and virtually. Again, there's the catchphrase, "to the greatest extent possible." Our related service providers have done a phenomenal job being as flexible as possible to schedule in-person and virtual therapy sessions. We have added additional staff in the area of speech to assist our providers with creating their schedules. It's been quite a challenge having students coming in sometimes every other day. Also, some being remote only, only coming to school virtually. So it's been a challenge, but our providers are doing the best they can to schedule their students. And we've added the additional staff to accomplish that as well. Okay, Mr. Lidle, next slide. So just a few updates on some things that are going on throughout the district. As I'm sure you've heard and I believe has been discussed at previous board meetings, we were awarded a couple grants. One being the Unified Champion Schools Grant through Special Olympics New Jersey. It's $15,000 and it's to directly promote inclusive education. And I'll just give you a little overview here of what this entails. There's three facets of the Unified Champion Schools. A lot of times when you hear Special Olympics New Jersey, you think of the athlete program and the actual Special Olympics that you may have seen in the past. But there are three prongs to the, to the grant here. One being the Unified Sports, which provide youth with and without intellectual disabilities, the opportunity to train and play together as teammates. That's the key, is everyone, and excuse the pun, is on an even playing field, whether it's through Unified Sports, through clubs. The next one is inclusive youth leadership. And through the unified clubs that we will establish at all of our schools, students of all abilities come together as equals to discover one another's strengths. Students learn to co-lead and play alongside one another rather than engage as helpers or volunteers. So again, everyone has an equal voice and an equal responsibility at the table. And the last one is whole school engagement. And Special Olympics New Jersey understands that changing the culture requires engaging the entire school community. And this is accomplished through youth-led activities and programs that promote school-wide involvement, social inclusion, education, and awareness. These are things like Special Olympics fundraising events that they run, unified PE, unified fitness activities. And Week of Respect campaigns, Week of Inclusion, things like that. So the next step there is we are establishing a district leadership team, which will come together right after the break. And we will start planning how we're going to roll this out district-wide. And it is a district-wide grant and initiative that we will be starting. Next is New Jersey Inclusive Education Technical Assistance Grant. This is a partnership between the New Jersey Department of Education, New Jersey Center for Inclusive Education, and Montclair University. This is free technical assistance PD that's being offered. We, we did apply for a couple schools. We were awarded the technical assistance part for the middle school and our in-class resource teachers. We started up, it's being facilitated via Zoom this year. It was supposed to be an in-person initiative, but it is being facilitated for our teachers via Zoom. We started in October, but because there are three, well, two government agencies and a university involved. There's some layers of red tape that they have to go through to get their curriculum approved. It halted us for a little bit, but we just received, we're back up and running Thursday after break. So that'll be once a week through January and into February with our teachers. So two grants that we were awarded promoting inclusive education and looking forward to getting both of those up and running once we return from break. Okay, Lidle, next slide. Just wanted to talk briefly, we, some new instructional resources that we have. One thing we are beginning to implement is the Unique Learning System for our MD and autism populations. It's a very individualized learning system that caters to this population of students. There are different learning bands for each grade level. There's pre-assessments that each student takes and it generates individualized differentiated lessons based on data. There's the extensive data collection piece. It's very user-friendly for this population. And as you see on the slide, from one convenient cloud-based platform, educators deliver differentiated, standards-aligned content enhanced by powerful assessments. Data tools and evidence-based instructional support. It's, it's giving access to this population of students, giving them access to the general education curriculum that's tailored individually for them. It's a very extensive program. We did, it was brought to my attention to support our teachers through the virtual instruction with some of our populations that's quite challenging. So we are getting up and running with this and have some really good feedback on this unique learning system so far. Next slide, Mr. Lidle. So next, I'll just talk about some of the things that are going on at the high school and some of the improvements we're trying to make in our transition services as our students transition to adulthood. As you know, many of our special education students stay with us through age 21 until they transition into adulthood. So last year, something we wanted to acknowledge and present at a board meeting and of course, as everything else was derailed by COVID. We established a community-based instruction program, CBI for short, with Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Leonard's class at the high school. Where our programs established a partnership with Captain's Inn. And they went to Captain's Inn once a week and I can't say enough about how great Captain's Inn were working with our students. To their abilities, some students were folding napkins, some students were wrapping scallops and bacon. It was pretty incredible what they did for our kids and showing them what it was like to work at a restaurant. And the classes also visited other community businesses such as Lester Glen Hyundai, Retro Fitness. And something that we were really looking forward to expanding upon this year, unfortunately, you know, until we're allowed back out into the community, can't really do that. But it is there, ready to go. And then, and once we're allowed to again, we will, we will definitely continue to expand our CBI program. To that extent, we're looking at what we can do inside our buildings. That being expanding our current life skills curriculum to provide meaningful hands-on experiences, including updating a space at the high school. To provide students with special needs, a life skills room equipped with a sink, oven, stove, dishwasher, washer, dryer, other things such as a single bed. Things to develop life skills that they will need when they transition into adulthood. Uh, we're also exploring other opportunities to provide this job exploration virtually uh through the current health restrictions that we're dealing with. I've sat through a few um demos so far, some resources that are out there and just uh seeing what makes sense um for our students and looking forward to hopefully unveiling some of the things that we're working on soon uh to, to continue to provide that transition service to our students when they're not allowed to be out in the community and actually interacting with um community members. Okay, Mr. Laido. So of course I had to include some photos of our students and what's going on throughout the district. Uh, as, as I mentioned before, we took our preschool disabilities program from a two-and-a-half-hour day to a four-hour day. That could be quite long for some of our little ones, uh, so they do get out onto the playground and play. And uh, the, the teachers in Paris have done a phenomenal job facilitating uh the, the new environment and um, you know, allowing the kids to have fun while still uh keeping them safe. They always leave preschool with a smile on your face, that's for sure. All right, next slide. So here we have Mrs. Hughes's class at Lenoka Harbor School. Again, another classroom, you can't walk in and walk out of it without a smile on your face. Uh, Mrs. Hughes and the power professionals in that room uh create such a warm and inviting environment for our kids. Uh, so there they all there with their masks on, giving thumbs up. Uh, can't say enough about how, you know, our students have risen to the occasion as well and are dealing with the, the health and safety protocols that we were all working on there. Okay, Mr. Laido. Uh, just a quick view, talking about life school skills, here's some students working on some sewing skills, frying up some eggs. So these are some of the life skills activities that they are participating in. Uh, we're looking to upgrade some of the equipment that they have uh to uh truly provide a, a good, safe space for them to um engage in these life skills activities. Next slide. And here, uh, just a fun event that took place on Friday. Um, our uh Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Leonard's M D and Autism Program at the high school had a culminating Olympic Day event to wrap up their Ancient Greece unit. And you can see over on the left in his chariot, his assistant principal, Mr. Angelo, getting ready for his chariot race. And on the right is uh Miss, Mrs. Kelly's class and, and their togas and uh um everyone has their Spartan helmets on. So on the next slide, we will see uh Mr. Angelo cruising to victory.
Mark, get set, go!
Here we go.
Whoa, whoa!
Looks like Mr. Angelo is running!
Okay, thank you. So again, just gives you a, a little insight into what's going on on a day-to-day basis. Can't say enough about our teachers district-wide from pre-k through the high school, doing their best to make the best of, of what we're dealing with and, and create a, a fun and engaging learning environment for all of our students. Uh, so that concludes my presentation. Uh, thank you very much and happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Bond. Appreciate that. And uh, thanks for uh giving us a little video there at the end. Looks like they were having a lot of fun. Tried you weren't in the chariot there.
I, I tried to get there and, and as the days usually do, they got away from me and unfortunately was not able to make it.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, thank you and uh thank you for that overview. Really uh appreciate it. All right, and uh my report is almost done, except um we do have something important to uh tackle. And that is to bid farewell to Board Vice President Riggs as this marks his very last board meeting. Uh, so Mr. Riggs, I can't thank you enough for your dedicated service to the students, the staff and the families of the Lacy Township School District. I have always appreciated the conversation that you have brought to the table. I have appreciated working with you uh over the years as Chair of the Policy Committee. Uh, it is not an easy committee. There's lots to read, lots to discuss, lots to uh research and review. And uh you did a fantastic job just communicating the important, uh, not that it's not all important, but the uh critical, I should say, aspects of some of the more controversial policies. And you always did it with a level-headedness. Um, and I've enjoyed having conversations with you uh about all of that and many other things. So uh you will be missed. Um, and we hope that you will check in with us uh, you know, now and again, and that uh you don't go too far. And uh Mrs. Downing, I believe uh you have a few words for Mr. Riggs.
Okay, so Mr. Riggs, we have a resolution here from the Board of Education. And I'm going to read it to you. It says, uh, Lacy Township School District Resolution, whereas Robert Riggs Jr. has served one term as a member of the Lacy Township Board of Education and has faithfully and respectfully served as an exemplary board member. And whereas during his service to the Lacy Township Board of Education, Robert Riggs Jr. served as Vice President of the Board of Education in two thousand twenty, actively served as Chair of the Policy Committee, which includes co-curriculars, safety and security, and LTASA liaison, served on the facilities committee, negotiations committee, and employee of the month committee, was a NJ SBA delegate and an Ocean County School Board's delegate, and as an active and contributing member of numerous committees of the board, always available to serve as an alternate when needed. And whereas Robert Riggs Jr. always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which he has been elected by the voters of the Lacy Township School District and has always displayed respect and an outstanding level of positive boardmanship to his fellow board members with whom he has served. And whereas Robert Riggs Jr. always displayed fairness, integrity and dignity in dealing with the issues presented to the board for decision-making, caring about what was most important. And the district will forever miss such a strong and dedicated advocate for students and a friend of education. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lacy Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the board does hereby formally acknowledge with great appreciation the countless hours of volunteer service to the students and staff of the Lacy Township School District and the citizens of Lacy Township during his three years of loyal service to the Lacy Township Board of Education. The board acknowledges with heartfelt and deep appreciation the time, effort and sacrifices Robert made for our district and wishes him many unencumbered evenings to spend with his family and friends. Dated this twenty-first day of December two thousand twenty, Dr. Vanessa Clark, Superintendent of Schools. So Mr. Riggs, I know all seven of us or the six of us have um comments that we will make probably during uh board comments. But would you like to say anything right now?
Oh my goodness, thank you for that uh very flower overly uh, uh, I don't know. It, that was, that was too much, guys. I know, I know you guys like to put a lot of whereas's in them, but um I just tried to do the best I could. Um, didn't really understand the job as I got here. Um, started to uh evolve or uh mutate, if you will, into the role. And um, uh, you know, I can't believe three years is over already. In some ways, it doesn't feel like three years at all, and in some ways, it feels like we've been doing this for a lot longer. But um, I, I thank you guys. Thanks for everything you did, all of you on the board, uh, all of you out there. Um, appreciate being able to uh, I don't know, learn and grow and, and try this out. I never would have thought uh that this is where I would have been. Um, and in that, uh, I think that's a lesson to anyone out there who's listening to this, is you never really know the weird twists and turns in life where you're gonna end up, because I never would have anticipated this. But um, very much appreciated. And um, yeah, I'll still be hovering around somewhere, but I don't think you'll be seated on this side of the table anytime soon. Thank you all.
Thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. Dr. Clark?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Downing, for reading that uh, how many, one, two, three, four whereas's. Uh, Mr. Riggs, you will be missed. And finally, I wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and a Happy and Healthy New Year. May two thousand twenty-one be a better year than two thousand twenty. I don't know about all of you, but I'm sick of two ta- two thousand twenty and I'm ready for it to go. Uh, as a reminder, school will be closed uh after Wednesday. So tomorrow we have a, uh, we have school, Wednesday we have school. Um, and then we are on winter break until Friday, January first, and we will reopen on Monday, January fourth. Uh, I will be sending out a communication to our families tomorrow uh to just talk a little bit more about travel advisories, um, how to get in touch with us while we are in winter break. So just because we're closed doesn't mean we're not available. Um, we're not just gonna go poof and disappear. Um, and that communication will go out tomorrow. So that concludes my comments, Board President Downing for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. And now we will move on to public comment. Mr. Mermon, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. At this time, we'll accept public comment. The time limit for public comment is five minutes per speaker. You will be allowed to speak a second time when everyone else has finished their comments if you choose to do so. Anyone who would like to comment at this time is instructed to virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app or dial star nine if you're calling in via telephone. You'll be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn. Devojian, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Good evening, everyone. Devojian, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm the co-chair of the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. And I just wanted to uh thank Dr. Clark for allowing Mr. Bond to take us on a tour of uh some of the therapy rooms in the schools. We're not finished, uh, but we look forward to making positive changes and fundraising to improve educational experience of all special needs students. And on behalf of this T-Peg, I want to thank Mr. Riggs for his three, past three years of uh service in the Lacy Township School District. So thank you and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Dee. Happy holidays to you and your family as well.
Okay, Michael Ryan, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Good, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm here to wholeheartedly tonight to encourage this board, um, after our return to holiday break to pivot and go full remote for a period of two weeks. Um, and the reason why I'm making this statement tonight is due to what's happening in our county and across the state. The number in cases, um, our district currently staff-wise is literally hanging on by a thread. Since our Thanksgiving break, we've seen entire departments such as our cafeteria staff in certain buildings, our nighttime custodians, crew, um, put on quarantine. As of today, we have more teachers, a power, and even a building administrator that was put on a quarantine. Many staff have not seen their family or loved one in months. Over Thanksgiving, we asked our staff not to travel for the betterment of everyone. Many made that sacrifice. Families and students were able to travel and spend time with family, then had the ability to switch to remote after. With multiple holidays coming up over a holiday break, we cannot expect people not to spend time with their families. The weather changing does not allow for people outside family gatherings. Even with safety precautions being followed, it is still not a hundred percent. As of now, December thirty-first is the last day uh for the current form of the CARES Act legislation as it relates to COVID for childcare as leave as, as well as the COVID days. If our staff and our student population were to come back after break with symptoms or a positive test result, I don't see any way the district could maintain in-person instruction. A two-week switch to remote would allow any positive case or asymptomatic individuals to clear their symptoms. This would allow our custodial and maintenance staff an opportunity for a hard cleaning and disinfection throughout the school district-wide. And our nurses, ironically, who were just honored tonight for being quote-unquote on the front lines, give them a much-needed reprieve. Making this decision now would allow families enough time to plan rather than to return an in-person instruction only to be shut down again. No one wants students back in more than our staff, but when it's safe. We have done an okay job in controlling our school spread, but as a district, we'd be naive to believe that we could control what's outside our schools in the community from coming in. The question is, why should we? The question becomes, why wouldn't we if we're doing it for everyone? Thank you for listening, and I wanted to thank uh Mr. Riggs for his service. And I'd like the board to consider what the topic was tonight with remote instruction. Many other districts have followed in this path. And I would encourage our district to explore this opportunity as well. And thank you guys and have a great holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. And Mr. Ryan, I know that um you've met with Dr. Clark. So Dr. Clark, do you wanna make a statement or anything right now?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mrs. Downing. And that is correct. Uh, Mr. Ryan and the uh Building Association reps uh have met. Uh, Mr. Zalinski um has attended uh various uh faculty meetings to just review some of the uh protocols, uh continuing protocols that uh we have in place. And, you know, I understand everybody's concerns. And I, I, you know, wanna reiterate, and I've said this many times, but it's uh worth repeating, um, is that we have been on the phone every single day uh with the Ocean County Health Department uh as late as this morning, in fact. And um, you know, when we talk to them, we talk about the levels of uh quarantining that's going on. Um, and you know, just by way of explanation, and I know a lot of people know this, but I think it's important for me to explain uh again to the public is, you know, when we were in the yellow, and when I talk about yellow, I'm talking about the uh New Jersey COVID activity level reports um that come out every Thursday. Um, and that's what we're going by. And so when that comes out, uh, we know where we are on that activity level report based on our region. And we are in Central East. We are with um Monmouth County, um, Ocean County and Union County. And I believe Middlesex County as well. Um, when we were in yellow, uh, quarantine was based on uh COVID-related um symptoms and through contact tracing, um, that's how decisions were made. When we moved to orange, and we've been in orange, um, and by the way, the next level would be red. It takes a lot for us, it would take a lot for us to get there. I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, but we are still in orange. Um, that means that we have to look at things a little different and we have to take a look at all symptoms. Um, not just COVID, you know, a sniffle, a fever, a headache, a cough. Um, our school nurses are uh meeting with those people and putting them out on quarantine um until they go for a COVID test. If that COVID test comes up negative, those people come back, whether it's students or staff members. Um, Mr. Ryan's not wrong. We have been working very hard to maintain the status of being open. But we are also following every protocol to a T with regard to quarantine um and cleaning and cleaning and cleaning. And I submit that that is one of the many reasons why we have been able to uh keep our schools open. And at the end of the day, um, you know, our kids need to be in school uh for a variety of reasons. I mean, from an educational standpoint, that's obvious. But um, you know, we have working families who rely on schools um and rely on the fact that their kids are in school. Um, and look, I, I, you know, I've said this many times, uh, here we are um coming up on a year before this uh pandemic was introduced to us, before it was thrust upon us, and we've been through a lot. Um, I do see light at the end of the tunnel based on what I'm hearing, and I am optimistic. But I've said that there is longevity to this pandemic. And, you know, remote, there's a, a marked difference between uh remote learning and online learning. You know, uh, we, remote learning is temporary, whereas online learning is intentional. People choose online learning. People don't choose to uh learn remotely. And our teachers didn't go to school to uh, especially in the, in the public or the K-12 sector, didn't go to school to teach remotely. Um, and again, I've said it once, I'm gonna say it a hundred times, and maybe a hundred times more. We did in two days what should have taken two years to plan and implement, and that is that online program. So I, I don't wanna digress and go off on a tangent, but I, I'm hearing clearly- So I, I don't want to digress and go off on a tangent, but I, I'm hearing clearly, Mr. Ryan is saying, we keep our lines of communication open. We will continue to do that. And the reason I mentioned the Ocean County Health Department is in discussing with them where we are right now, what our numbers look like. We asked them, you know, can we, should we stay open? And their response this morning was, yes, you are doing everything right. Your numbers are, you know, like everybody else's, but you're doing above and beyond as far as following those protocols, and they recommended we stay open. We don't make these decisions unilaterally. We don't just wake up and say, we're just going to keep plowing on and, and not take into account the safety of our, our staff members and our students. So with all of that said, we are, over the break, going to watch where we are in terms of levels. I am going to provide an avenue of communication for our families, and we will continue to communicate with the Health Department and make some decisions about what Monday, January 4th is going to look like.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Mr. Mermon?
Okay, at this time, Sonia Markatello, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, really clear.
All right. Congratulations to the nurses. That was really great for the school district to recognize your nurses. That was one thing. The second thing I wanted to say was, Rob Riggs, this district is certainly going to miss you. It's been a pleasure having your voice of reason on some pretty difficult topics over the past couple of years. So hopefully, this is just a temporary separation, and we'll see your name on a ticket again someday. The next thing I wanted to question, Dr. Clark, I did send you an email on the 16th. I haven't received a response back yet, but I just was wondering if there was any way with the coordination of the IT department, if absenteeism could be a part of parent notification, just as if the kids were in school. So in other words, if a student is missing out of a virtual class, is there any way that we can somehow get a notification to a parent? Unfortunately, there are many parents who are working. Some don't have childcare at home. So there's a lot more kids at home alone than we care to admit to. So one reason is for safety, to make sure that the kids are okay. So if they're not participating in class, then the parents should know that. The other thing is for discipline. So, you know, for the kids that aren't in class and, and would typically be, you know, loly again or not paying attention, they would have a teacher there to, you know, shake things up a little bit. But the same thing for the students that are home alone. You know, there's no one there to enforce the discipline of being present and actively participating in the class.
So, thank you, Mrs. Markatello. I, I apologize for the email. I don't recall seeing one, but I'm certainly going to go back and take a look. I try to answer emails as they come in. You know, you make an interesting request, and it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility. Let me take a look at your email so that I know exactly what it is that, the point that you're trying to make, but you are right. And, you know, that is one thing that, you know, I, I, not just us, but we're struggling with is to stay in touch with those students who have become disengaged. And I know our teachers are doing a phenomenal job, as are our counselors, to try to reach those students and families. But yeah, that you make a good suggestion, and we'll certainly look into whether or not that's something we can do. So thank you for sharing, and I, again, I apologize for not answering your email. I totally must have missed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mermon?
If there's anybody else who would like to make a public comment at this time, just please hover over the raise your hand on the Zoom app. But for right now, I know Mr. George has a few emailed-in comments that he'd like to put into the public comment section.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mermon. I have three. The first one I have is from Rhiannon Mendes, 1771 Woodside Road, Fork River. A regular meeting comment reads as follows: "With the new platform this year, will modifications be made for retentions? Has there been any talk of an enhanced summer program for students that are struggling slash not participating in the hybrid virtual model? Dr. Clark, would you be able to respond? That's out of my wheelhouse."
Sure. So, you know, that's a great question, kind of like when we discuss SCL or social emotional learning, and what is it that we're doing to help our students and staff with mental health challenges throughout this pandemic. We certainly are going to take a look at the academic slide. There's already an abundance of research that is coming out from some well-respected entities about what this is going to look like when the pandemic is over. In fact, I was just having a conversation with Mr. Mueller, who is our county superintendent, about some research coming out of Stanford that with regard to science, they're, they're already finding that students are getting years behind in addition to math. So it's going to be a challenge. There are going to be many challenges. We're not alone. And the point of this conversation that I had with Mr. Mueller is in him asking, what is it that the county office and the Department of Education can do to assist districts? And my response to him was that, you know, no one district is going to be facing these issues alone and that, you know, we, we need to form a task force on how we are going to respond to these gaps in the loss of learning. And I even offered my services, and I told him that I would be happy to lead the task force if needed, because I believe that we are going to see the ramifications of this for many years to come. So it's a great question. We are looking at it not just from a district perspective, but from a county perspective and beyond. And I'm sure that there is going to be lots of conversation about it. So more to come.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. The remaining two questions, comments that I have are from Mr. Rosoli. And unfortunately, the comments are very brief. The first one is a question on policies, and the second one merely says, Mr. Riggs. For those who are tuning in, this is the first time that we are permitting Google Form to be used to submit comments, typically up to 3 o'clock the day of a board meeting. The link is on the website in the portion of the meeting notice that is placed on the website. I, if Mr. Rosoli's out there, I would love to hear, I sure would all love to hear more elaboration on the question he has on policies and a kind word for Riggs, but I don't have any further information than what I just shared with everyone.
I will say, Mr. Rosoli, wherever you are, I would have liked to answer them questions. I always did enjoy the banter back and forth. I don't know. I, I think sometimes you come up to the mic and some people maybe cringe a little bit. I, I never felt that way. I always wanted to hear what you had to say. I liked, I liked the conversation. So, um, sorry, we didn't get to do this one last time. But if I see you out on time, I'll talk to you out there. Mrs. Downing, that's really all I have.
Okay, and Mr. Mermon, we're good?
None.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to board comments. So we'll start with Mrs. McAvoy, and you'll do a curriculum report as well, please.
So, the curriculum committee met last week. We reviewed the CUSAC, which Dr. Clark talked about. We spoke about technology. The Chromebooks should all be in this month. Dr. Clark, did they come in, the Chromebooks?
No, they did not.
Okay, so they'll be in in January, hopefully?
That's what we're hoping.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, and in health and wellness, we talked about the Crisis Emergency Management Plan and the Emergency Management Kits, and we're ordering communication devices for the implementation of multi-band communication in each school. They will have direct contact with the first responders, therefore eliminating the telephone. So it's a safety measure, and it's an upgrade for the district for the communication infrastructure. And we also met with the CPAG group, with Dr. Clark, Mr. George, and Mr. Bond. And we had a great meeting, and we plan on having more. It's a part of the curriculum committee. Mr. Bond presented like he did tonight. We talked about the walkthrough. We talked about the new X-School Room, which is coming in future. So it was a good meeting, and I think Dr. Clark will probably plan another one in the new year. For the spotlight on students, it's now on the website. Dr. Clark has an addition. So all the students that are spotlighted are now on the website. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit. Tonight, Valerie Meehan, she graduated in 2019 with honors. She was in OCCA Cohort One from Lacey High School, so she graduated with her associates. She was very active in high school. She went to Monmouth University and then decided that college wasn't for her. So she went to enlist in the Navy. She scored very high on her ASVAC, and she was able to choose any job she wanted, and she chose cryptology, like the spy. She was shipped out to Illinois, and she received very, a lot of awards while in boot camp. A leadership award, she graduated, and now she is in Pensacola. She's in a high-security job position, and she's not able to talk about it. And Valerie, we're very proud of you. I remember you. You were so active in the high school. The next one is Krista Barone, a 2011 graduate. She went to Ithaca College for one year, then transferred to Rutgers, where she graduated three years later with a biochemical engineering degree. She's currently working and getting her master's at NYU. Krista has been in the medical field following her graduation from Rutgers. Krista started working for Fixer Incorporated, New York, where she's been part of the team who created the vaccine, the vaccine for the coronavirus. We're very proud of you, Krista. And for my comments, I just want to thank all the parents out there for trusting us with your children. It's a tough time. It'll probably never be like this again another year. We've made some difficult decisions. Not everybody's happy with them, but we're always looking for what's best for your children. Thank you to all the nurses who received the awards, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers, the maintenance, the cafeteria staff, and the administration, for everybody going above and beyond during these times. Mr. Riggs, I will miss you. I'll miss all the talks, but hopefully we'll keep in touch. You were a good board member and a lot of fun to work with. Thank you for your service. And I want to say happy holidays to everyone, and please stay safe. That's it, President Downing.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, and would you please do facilities at the same time?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Downing. Caitlin Savant, Caroline Matthew, that got the Matt Blum Award, congratulations. I knew Mr. Blum personally. He was a great man. That's a great award to receive. Sophia Leiter, Senior of the Month, Colin Senior of the Month, congratulations. School nurses, thank you for what you do. I'm also a vod education myself, and I realize what your nurses go through each and every day. I really appreciate it. The Summer Reading Club, 32 hours. Congratulations. You've now qualified to be a school board member, because that's how much time a month we spend getting ready for medias, reading all the paperwork. So one day, guys, a couple of years from now, hopefully you'll run for school board. Mr. Bond, thank you for the presentation. It was very enlightening. I really enjoyed the unified club aspect where you have a multi-age, different students in, in the same program together. I really like to see, see that in person when, when the COVID crisis is over and we have an opportunity to be in the school somewhere. Sonia Marchatello, you had a great concept about the virtual learning attendance aspect. I was just wondering, Dr. Clark, if possible, I know the parents have access to student portal. So is there a possible way we could talk to the IT guys about possibly marking attendance, the daily attendance? The teachers can mark daily attendance on that, on that portal? So parents could see that or not, rather than having the teachers reach out to every parent of the student, of the students out in that virtual class? So maybe we could possibly look into that. Mr. Riggs, Mr. Riggs, Mr. Riggs, Mr. Riggs, it has been a pleasure. You kind of took me under your wing as a rookie board member and, and showed me some ropes and, some things to do, not to do. And I've gotten some text messages after meetings, both negative and positive, and thanks for being so honest. It was definitely a, a pleasure working with you. As far as facilities meeting, Mr. Riggs, myself, Mr. Scanlon, Mr. George, and Dr. Clark, on December 8th, we met. We looked at a couple of different options, talked about a few different things. The one concern I brought up was, we have some money locked up in an account that we can only use for certain items. And security action, you know, when I ran for school board, the number one thing was, you know, students first, students first, students first. And we have some accidentally money to upgrade our security system and our fire alarm system. And due to security reasons, I want to talk specifically about that. But also, I made a recommendation of possibly taking some of that money and each year possibly upgrading the air conditioning systems or adding air conditioning systems to each school, a certain percentage to each school. So eventually, doing a long-term program that all our schools, whatever, air conditionings, that way our students will be comfortable throughout the, the warmer months of the school year. We also discussed, hang on one second, please, I'm checking my notes. Oh, the, we still have a balance in our food service program, and I was surprised to see that due to the fact that all the students are getting a free lunch right now. And it was explained to me that it was leftover monies from last year. That is it. Everyone have a great Merry Christmas, a happy holiday, whatever you're celebrating. Celebrating with your family closely and be safe. And thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mrs. Cessenza?
I just got a note. My internet connection is unstable, so if I go off, my internet connection is unstable. I'm not a big fan of these virtual meetings, but here we go. Goodbye and good luck to Mr. Riggs. He's been one of the best board members to ever grace this body and a Lacey graduate as well. He handled policy in a way that no one before him ever has. You will be missed. You are a true servant of the community. And congratulations to the Senior Students of the Month, Colin Rolak, Sophia Leider, and our unsung hero, Matthew Kahn. We so wish we could do this in person, and hopefully someday soon, maybe we will. Congratulations to all the NHS inductees. Again, sorry we could not be there in person, but the video was beautiful. And thank you to everyone who made this special occasion possible. And thank you and congratulations to all our nurses. The medical personnel, without a doubt, have gone above and beyond during these times. I really miss attending our events in person, especially the holiday concerts. This truly has been a trying year for everyone, and we know the virtual learning is not preferred, but it's the best we can do at this time. And we continue with the hybrid schedule. And we continue with the hybrid schedule. In addition to losing both of my parents to the COVID pandemic, each day I seem to learn of another relative, friend or neighbor testing positive all over the country. Everyone has to be on their guard to keep this disease at bay. And now I'd like to take a moment to read our policy and bylaw oh one seven one, which outlines the roles and additional responsibilities of a school board president. District policy oh one seven one, duties of president and vice president. The president of the Board of Education shall preside at all meetings. Two, require the board secretary to call special meetings of the board under NJAC six eight thirty-two, three point one. Three, sign all school district warrants under NJSA eighteen A nineteen dash one. Four, certify to all payrolls NJSA eighteen A nineteen point nine. Five, subscribe bonds, notes, contracts and other legal documents for which the signature of the president is required under NJSA eighteen A twenty-four dash thirty-two. Six, issue subpoenas to compel attendance of witnesses and production of documents NJSA eighteen A six dash twenty. Seven, appoint all committees of the board and serve as committee member ex officio in accordance with board bylaw zero one five five. The vice president shall assume and discharge the duties of the president in the president's absence, disability or disqualification under NJSA eighteen A sixteen one point one. And this was revised on December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. And NJSA is statutes annotated and NJAC is. Oh, what is that, Mr. De George?
It's the administrative code for.
The administrative code, we function under both statutes and administrative code. So this consequently means that the position of board president does not convey power. It conveys additional duties and responsibilities. The position is basically one of managing the work of the Board of Education. I do hope that the new year, two thousand twenty-one will be better for all of us. Be safe and stay healthy. The next board meeting will also be virtual. The annual reorganization meeting will be January fourth, two thousand twenty-one at six PM. Is that correct, Mr. De George? Thank you to all attending. Thank you to all attending and watching our meeting tonight. Someday soon, maybe we'll be back in person all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cessenza. Mr. Scanlon and a report on finance, please?
Yes, thank you. The, good evening to everyone. And I'd like to start out by wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa, or whatever holiday you celebrate. I'd like to congratulate the seniors of the month, Colin Rolak and Sophia Leider and the unsung hero, Matthew Kahn. The staff members, all nine nurses, that was a really nice surprise. I thought it was really well thought out and that committee did a good job on that one. Because if there's a group of people that deserve to be thanked for all their efforts at this time, it is the nurses. Probably along with a lot of other people too, but the nurses, the nurses are standout. And I personally like to thank them for all they've done. And I'd also like to congratulate the student of the month to middle school, Jacob Behouge. I would get in a lot of trouble if I didn't congratulate him. Okay. And then of course, there's Mr. Riggs. I don't want to get down to the end and forget to say what I think about him. When I first started out on the board, I was the new guy. I knew a couple of people. I knew him barely. And then we had a conversation before I actually got on. It lasted about forty-five minutes and I realized that this was the person I was really going to need to talk to. Level-headed, honest, articulate. And I spent the rest of the year trying to convince him he needed to run again. And I still don't know why he doesn't listen to me. I listened to him, he could have listened to me. Going to miss you, Robert, and, but I, I'll bump into you once in a while. I go, it seems like I go to a lot of funerals, so I do bump into you. Okay. But anyway, you've been a wonderful experience. And on the, on the agenda tonight, I think one of the things, I could be wrong and Mr. Rizzoli can correct me if I am, but the comment made that he seemed to have put in there had to do with policy. And the first thing that we did tonight in the agenda portion of the meeting was to pass a new policy. And we never described it, we never discussed it, but just simply for the people who wonder what we did, we just basically put together the policy that we have for public meetings and made officially the policy of remote meetings. And if you didn't see it or if you weren't given the opportunity, you might wonder what policy you're putting out. And I just have a feeling that maybe Mr. Rizzoli was worrying that, needed that explained a little bit. And if I'm wrong, as I said, I'm sure you'll tell me. The on the agenda tonight, there were several items that were financial. And first of all, the, Mr. Peters did describe the addition of the security, which was covered the purchase of police radios to help secure our schools. And what it is, is that these are the same radios, the same, I hate to say walkie-talkies because they're way, way beyond walkie-talkies, but the same portable communications that the police use with a dedicated line and a dedicated frequency for us in case of an emergency. And there'll be one in each school and one in the board office. So that in case of an emergency, we have a direct communication, no need to dial, no need to be, go through a a menu to get to the people we need. It's just, they'll be able to push the button and talk. And that along with a couple of other items, one of them is the upgrading of the fleet. We needed a new a new vehicle for our replacing two vehicles. And one of them is a utility vehicle for grounds and the other is a transportation vehicle. And then two buses being retired. When I looked at that, you see it in the agenda and it shows that they're going to be offered to other public agencies at a price of four hundred dollars. It doesn't sound like much to you, realize that we've already went through them and taken everything of any value off of. I asked that question when I looked at that and said, four hundred dollars? And I was told, well, what's left on them? Four hundred dollars might be high. Every piece that is usable is gone. Am I correct, Mr. George?
You're absolutely correct. We harvest everything that we can.
Okay, and that's just good business.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So basically, along with that, again, like to wish everyone happy holidays. Mr. Riggs will miss you and thank you for the opportunity to make the comments, Mrs. Down.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Polino?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking, actually congratulating, thanking, congratulating our award recipients for this month. Matthews, Sophia and Colin, great job. Congratulations and best of luck to you the rest of this year and your future endeavors. I want to thank our, our nurses, all of them for going above and beyond what they do every day. Congratulations on your award, like Mr. Scanlon said, that was really a great choice for this month. But I also want to thank the rest of our staff, teachers, everybody from cafeteria, bus drivers, paraprofessionals. Everybody's just stepping up and doing their part, more so than ever to keep us going. And speaking of that, I just want to address Mr. Ryan's comments. You know, probably around December tenth or so was the two-week period after Thanksgiving when numbers are really going to start to peak in our school district. So numbers have gone up in the township and, you know, like Dr. Clark said, you know, Mr. Zalinski's in contact with the health department and right now there's not a need for us to, to close it down. So, you know, as much time as we can get in the school, the kids in the classroom, it's the best thing as possible. Of course, you know, our Dr. Clark and staff are keeping an eye on things. If we need to shut it down, we will. But again, this would have been a period of time right around this time of December that our numbers really would have gone out of control come the Thanksgiving holiday. So hopefully it'll, it'll, it'll stay constant after the Christmas break and into the next year. I want to thank Mr. Bond for his, at the meeting we have at the CPAGs, it was very informational. I like, I'm glad to see that this organization is, is getting the attention it deserves by administration. Dr. Clark's office and so forth, I'm looking forward to working with them next year. I just wanted to say, Mr. Riggs, you know, thank you for your three years. I really tried hard to get you to run with me again this year. Let's try to keep you for the next three years because I enjoyed working with you. I wish you'd stayed long, but listen, I get it, you know, being in the business you're in. It's very time consuming and having small children, the, the school board is definitely, takes a lot of time away from your family. So I absolutely get it, but I want to thank you, you've done a great job. And yes, you are the voice of reason. You know, you are a person who has a permanent olive branch attached to your hand. But just, just so you know, it's okay once in a while to dig your heels in and, and, and take a stand and fight back. It really is okay. And I know you don't like to do that sometimes, but it really is. And, and, and also, you know, give yourself some credit. I know a lot of times you don't do that privately, but you should give yourself some credit because you've done, you've done a great job and it was a pleasure working with you. And, and I heard you, your last sentence going out that you probably won't be sitting on this side of the table in the near future and then I completely understand why. So with that, I just want to thank my fellow board members and everybody for a great job and looking forward to two thousand twenty-one. Hopefully it'll be a better year. And with that, Merry Christmas, hope everybody who celebrated Hanukkah had a good time. Stay well, stay safe and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs? And policy?
Oh, of course, yes, we'll do, let, let's, let's conduct business first and then we'll get. So, policy, we did it one last time. We sat down one last time and we tried to clear out as much as we could. Try not to leave everybody with a bunch of unfinished business here. So there was a couple of policies that we had tabled for months as we discussed them. So I'll go through those real quick, only really the top two. The first one will be policy five one one one, which is eligibility of resident, non-resident students. And the sticking point on this policy was we were offering for exchange students, we were offering what would are known as F1 visa students were allowed in. But there was a question about J1 students and it took us a couple of months to really hammer this out. So what the difference is, is F1 students come to school and all they're here for is to learn. That's all they're here for is for academics. Now J1 students, on the other hand, or J1, J1 applicants, visa applicants can work and go to school too. But we felt that after discussion a bunch of times, that if someone's coming here and they want to work and they want to go to school, they're going to try all around to do the best they can. So we weren't going to not allow anybody in at that point. We wanted to be inclusive. So that took us a couple of months to actually land on because there was a lot of discussion. The second one was administering opioid antidote. Again, this took a couple of months and this was really Mr. Polino. He's really passionate about this, this sort of thing with his EMS background. And he had a question about the amount of doses that, that could be given under like a good Samaritan law. And it was all good conversation. And then again, we landed on a final number in our opioid antidote policy. The other one, two, three, four, five, six that we have on here, we're all mandated updates. One, the really only one worth noting would be policy seven four four zero, which was school district security. And that one added only one line, which is the school district shall annually conduct a school safety audit for each school building in accordance with provisions NJSA. So other than that, it was a retread of an earlier policy, but we added that where there could be an annual look back on it now. So that does our business side of things. Now for the other side. I guess I'm going to start with you guys, the board members. You've all been fantastic to me. I enjoyed the open communication. I enjoyed being able to speak to each one of you. I never felt there was any sort of, anything else other than we were all just going for the best, the best we could for the district. Now that being said, we all have different viewpoints and opinions. And anyone that can watching, that's watching this or that knows us can see this. We're all so different, but all like-minded in this, in this manner. And I really enjoy, I'm sort of a people watcher. I like watching people, I like seeing what makes people tick and learning the nuances of each one of you, the, the passions that you have, like Skip, you know, with facilities, like he just, I mean, you know, he just won't stop, he's got good ideas, but he's great with his ideas across the board. But, you know, he just goes from building to building and sees what can be fixed or what repaired. Ed, I know what makes you tick. Regina, you love digging into policy and digging into all the, the laws and the, everything else that goes on with that. Absolutely love going to the, to the meetings, to the county meetings and the state meetings and, and seeing all the other people that do this sort of thing. Donna, same thing, I mean, each one of you in your own way. Dr. Clark, always enjoyed working with you. I thought you were, you know, very smart, great for the district. I don't know, Decker's not here tonight, but he's, he's great too. I wish he was hanging around. President Downing, like I was saying, I hope we didn't leave a lot of unfinished business behind. I really liked working with you. I think it was sort of like a kindred spirit sort of thing there from early on. I always liked, I always liked listening to what you had to say. But backpedaling a bit, there's board members that aren't here anymore. There's Sean and Rob, Dave and Nick. These were all great guys too, and they were all helpful in the same way that, you know, I tried to be helpful to other people when they came in. These were the guys that when I first showed up on the scene, they said, hey, come on, you know, we'll show you what to do, what not to do. There was other, I sound like my, my grandpa described him like this, but there was another board member that was really neat. Frank Horvath totally surprised everybody because he came and he yelled at us for, for twenty-two minutes at one meeting and another meeting, he was there. And then he won an election and he got on the school board and I sat right next to him. And the guy was totally not the same guy that came in and yelled at us and screamed at us. He was, he was really into the job and it stinks that he had to go so soon. Pat, you know, your budget boot camp is riveting every year. Going to miss that. But who else is out there, really? Let, let me try to get through, I know I'm going to miss some people here, but I just want to do some thank yous to everyone that was out there real quick. Because like I said, on every level, I can't think of anyone that wasn't courteous or respectful or, or wanted to make this happen. And everyone I talked to, there's a lot of background people here that nobody will ever see. There's people in, in the central office, there's secretaries in the central office that are, that are fantastic, but nobody ever is, they're never going to come out here, you're never going to see them at a board meeting. Sharon Adina and Bev. Teresa and Linda. Who else is out there? I mean, I, I'm not, I want to do like a, I don't want to do a full list here, but I really, I just, I want to try not to miss anybody. Marco and everyone in facilities, the custodians, there's Jay and there's Mike and there's Kerry, Sal and Richard. We had some, some bus drivers, there's Diane and Tom and Christie is the, is my, Chrissy is my, my kid's bus driver and they're all wonderful. We had some some bus drivers. There's Diane and Tom and Christie is the is my Chrissy is my my kid's bus driver and they're all wonderful. Jeremy and Tom, you guys made these meetings go like month after month as we changed and and everything changed from month to month. This is now three years. And I would have never imagined that that on the last meeting that I'd be broadcasting from a basement than from my own basement and not be sitting in a meeting with you guys. I don't know. I probably missed some people along the way, but I'm telling you, guys were all wonderful. I'm never going to come back and do this again. I know you guys would probably like that, but. My wife wouldn't like that and nobody in my family would like that. I'm just going back to the fire department where I belong. Just going to go back and. I'll still check in on you guys every now and then. That's pretty much all I got, I think. I don't got anyone else on my list, so. Thanks, guys. Oh, absolutely fabulous food service director, Mr. Caro and her awesome team. And I think that's everybody. I'm good. Thank you, guys. And I appreciate the time that we spent together.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. My comments, I want to congratulate Colin. And Sophia for being selected as the Students of the Month. Also to Matthew Kohn for being selected as the Unsung Hero for December. I want to thank all our wonderful nurses for their dedication to the health and safety of our students and staff. Your efforts are appreciated and as Dr. Clark echoed, you are our heroes. You truly are. You're right there for all the kids and parents. And we appreciate it. I want to congratulate all our newly newly NHS inducted members. And I want to compliment one of the guest speakers. At the ceremony, he's he's a graduate Dylan Danko. And he spoke to the newly elected members. But his message was clearly to all students in the high school. And anywhere. And I believe it was a very powerful statement. He told the inductees that going to school is required. It's required by law. You have to go. However, doing your best and putting forth your best effort is not required. And neither is volunteering to give back to your community. But building a strong character, putting your best effort forth. Best effort is really important. And you do have 100% control. Over effort and the challenges everyone has in getting to be the best. So his words were very powerful and I sat there. And I listened to it a couple of times. So I want to thank you, Dylan, for your words of insightful advice. I think it was a very wonderful speech. To all students, do your best, work, put your best foot forward at all times and you'll get where you have to go. So thank you. And to my friend and colleague, Rob Riggs. Rob, you have served on this board for one term. And as far as I'm concerned, much too short. You've been a wonderful vice president. We worked as a team throughout this pandemic. We bounced ideas back and forth, shared the phone calling, and you were a sounding board. For each other. You were an amazing board member, knowing what a board member should. And should not do. And always putting the students in the district first. I'm going to miss you and I know this district is losing one of the best board members I've ever had the privilege of working with. And I've worked with a lot. Please, dear God, please consider running again for a seat on this board in the very near future. I want to thank Victoria and your boys for sharing their time with us. We really appreciate it. Rob, you're going to be really missed. Thank you. I'd also like to wish everyone a restful vacation, well needed vacation. And I'd like to wish all everyone a happy holiday and wishing all a healthy and happy 2021. And please send your thoughts and prayers to all of our servicemen and women who could not be with their families this Christmas. And before we go into new business, Skip sent me a message. You have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I just want to apologize to Matthew Kuhn. It's name is not Khan. It's Kuhn, like raccoon, that won the Matt Blunt Honsong Weir Award. Some of us were mispronouncing his name. That's all.
Yeah, I did. I just called him Cone. So sorry, Matthew. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to new business. Okay, A. This is a motion for approval of meetings held on November 16th, 2020, where all seven board members were present. Could I have a motion, please? Or any? Any discussion on these minutes? Seeing none.
This is just for item one.
Item one, right.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please, Mr. George.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
This is McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, number two, list of bills for December 2020. This is a motion to approve payment of bills totaling eight million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, Ed got it. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Peters, can I get you to abstain?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I abstain for which original day school?
The payment to Manchester. Yes, sir. Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa.
Yes, on all except nay on the clothing allowances, nine five two nine oh five, nine five two seven eight eight. Nine five two six seven zero, nine five three eight nine three and Holman nine five oh one six six. And the Weiner Law Group nine five three eight two eight.
And as always, you'll please send me an email.
I will send you an email with my name votes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, but I will abstain on bill number nine five zero four five zero. And bill number five two four nine five oh.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, number three, financial items, three through 12. Items three through 12, pages four through seven. This is a motion approving budgetary items. Any questions or comments?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Who was second? Rob? Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Thank you. Next section, facilities, items 13 through 17. This motion deals with all facility items. Questions, comments? Thank you. Second.
I'll second it. Peters.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. George.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. The Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing. Mrs. Downing.
She's muted.
Uh-oh, looks like I'm going to have to step into the breach here one more time.
Where are we right now?
My computer just went dead. Can you take over? I got a text from her. Oh, all right. Well, here we go, everybody.
Didn't she tell you what she's voting?
Hold on, let me get her. Hold on. Oh, wait, you can't do that.
You're not going out easy, Riggs.
Yep, see this? Can't let me go, huh? Every time I'm out.
Godfather three.
She did that on purpose.
Again, Patrick. All right, what number are we up to here?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. Oh, perfect. All right, so can we get a motion to? For eighteen, which is A4, which is going to be ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Board of Ed and the LTASA. She said yeah on that last vote, by the way.
Thanks.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Oh, any any discussion on this? This would be a good time for that.
Mr. Riggs, who was the motion?
It was Frank and.
I seconded.
All right, Frank and Peters.
Thank you.
I'm going to. In terms of discussion, I'll tell you now that I'm going to vote no on this because I haven't seen anything. I've heard some things about it, but I haven't seen any written backup on it and I was just. Not going to vote yes blindly.
Okay.
Mr. Riggs, did it get sent to all the board members?
Yes, that wasn't from me, but yes, it was supposed to.
It was shared in the notes, yes.
I I didn't. I'm sorry. I didn't see it. I missed it then.
Any other?
As an item by itself. But. My comment.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? Okay, Mr. George.
Sure, Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Peters.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa.
The voice of the taxpayers says no on agenda item eighteen.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Down, oh. She can't. She has to abstain.
Anyway.
She's an abstention.
Motion carries four two.
All right, I don't have I don't have her in front of me, her same thing. So I'm going to guess the next one is numbers nineteen through. Twenty-five.
Mr. Riggs.
What's that?
Nineteen through twenty-five.
Perfect, okay. Get a motion for numbers nineteen through twenty-five. This is going to be. Tuition, out of district placement and.
Transportation.
Make a motion.
Any discussion on it, any of these? Okay. So we had McAvoy and the Sensa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs.
Oh, she's back.
I'm back.
Oh, hello.
I went into Cyberland. Well, where are you?
It's in a fall apart while you were gone. We did okay.
Good, I'm sure you did.
All right, we're at the roll call of this nineteen through twenty-five.
Yes, nineteen through twenty-five, please.
All right, Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. The Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Number, the next one is policy numbers twenty-six and twenty-seven on page twelve. This is the first and second readings of several policies. Chairman Riggs, do you have any comments? For these or you already made your comments?
Nope, I think we'll see how it goes, but no.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Peters.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
What numbers is for twenty-six and twenty-seven or?
Yes, the policies.
Item number twenty-six, I vote no on policy five three three zero point zero four administering an opioid antidote.
You're going to do policy and reg both?
Both, yes. Policy and regulations, I vote no because of the amount of dosage given and the forcing of. Individuals to be removed and go to the hospital.
And yes, two twenty-seven, sir?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Thank you. Item twenty-eight. This is a motion to approve the extended school year for our special education students for the summer of 2021.
Move it.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yeah.
Mrs. Downing.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, item twenty-nine, page thirteen. This motion is to approve the submission of the New Jersey CUSAC District Performance Review. Is there any? Moving, Donna?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Did he? Did he say yes?
Mr. Peters, was that you? Did you say yes?
I can't hear him. Just go like this. Oh, boy.
Unstable connection.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, thank you. The next section B, donations. On behalf of the board and district, we thank you for these donations. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is this the Cedar Creek PTA? Is that the fundraiser they did by collecting all the recyclables?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Okay.
Who do you want to give that one to?
Oh.
It doesn't matter.
It's a coin.
Who is the other one? That'll be the second.
Peters.
Peters. Okay.
Sensa Peters, got it.
Roll call, please, or did we?
No, we're doing that now.
This connection is horrible. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes, and thank you. And I have to abstain on my own check.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. The next section C, programs and curriculum. We're voting on student teacher placements, practicums, internships, observations. Could I, any discussions?
Motion. Okay, second.
Roll call, please.
Can you help me out with, I know the second, but the first.
Motion, Polino.
Regina made the motion. Donna seconded.
We're getting a lot of feedback and slow connections. Sorry, guys.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. The Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. D, professional days and workshops. Any discussion? Motion. Ed Scanlon, second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, but I'm abstaining on the workshop that I attended.
Thank you. Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. E, certificated personnel, items one through eleven.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Just checking on one thing. Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. George.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes, congratulations to the retirees.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, and congratulations to the retirees.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Okay, moving on to F, non-certificated personnel, items one through eight.
Mrs. Downing, idea, I don't know. Mrs. Downing, I don't know if I, you heard, but I didn't call your name, but so you're okay with?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I said yes before you called my name. Sorry.
I didn't hear, sorry.
This connection here right now is so bad, so bear with me.
Yeah.
Okay, F, non-certificated personnel items, one through eight.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Mr. George, do we have any add-ons?
We do not.
Oh, okay.
Oh, then that's time for motion to adjourn.
Yes, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Motion, motion.
Back to.
What time is it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So let's Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Bye, Bob.
Everybody.
Needing adjourn.
See you later, Ed.